The Chair does see a quorum and calls this meeting of the Whitestown Town Council to order at 7:02 PM. Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
He's on mute.
I've unmuted.
There he is.
Councilman Worrell?
Here.
Councilman Miller?
Present.
Councilman Baum?
Howdy.
Councilwoman Austin?
Here.
Councilman Wishick?
Here.
Alright, thank you very much. If y'all please stay with me while Glenn does our pledge allegiance video.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the power for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
And the reason of all.
For everything justice.
For all.
Alright, thank you everyone and thank you again Glenn for putting that together of some of the children of Whitestown leading us in the pledge. I think it's a great little, little thing we've added to our meetings here during these interesting COVID times. Alright, with that, are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda at this time?
Mr. President, I make a motion, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Alright, I've got a motion. I will second the motion. Is there further discussion on the agenda? Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much. Having nothing under presentations, we'll move to clerk treasurer's report. Are there any questions for the clerk treasurer on the report? Alright, hearing none. Let's move to department reports. Are there questions on the department reports? Alright, having no questions on the department reports. Nathan, is there anyone from the waiting room that came in that wants to speak on a non-agenda item?
I've not had any requests at this time to speak on non-agenda items.
Alright, just a reminder once we get to agenda items, as noted here, they will be three-minute time to speak and please make sure you let Nathan know when your agenda item is coming up so that we can give you your allotted time. Alright, next we've got approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda which includes A) the approval of meeting minutes from October 14th, 2020; B) claims, the October 2020 expenses town, October 2020 revenues town, October utility claims, which also includes water operating and wastewater operating; C) vehicle purchase for RDC and the utility; D) consider an expenditure exceeding 5,000, not to exceed 15,000 for GIs equipment and software; E) consider sanitary sewer encroachment agreement with the R- V-R-E-M-C; F) consider expenditure exceeding 5,000, not to exceed 49,000, roller and new dump, new dump bed for the medium-duty truck; G) consider expenditure exceeding 5,000, not to exceed 37,000, replacement radar signs; H) consider contract with V-R-E-M-C for installing light pole with fiber at Anson Acres; I) consider expenditure exceeding 5,000, not to exceed 200,000, the Whitestown Fire Department construction allowance contingency; and J) authorize council president to approve emergency stay-home pay pursuant to ordinance 2020-29 until further notice.
Alright, thank you very much. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. As far as further discussion, I do want to just note here, what I found interesting with the radar signs is that there's actually the ability for these to communicate with the police department through an app that allows them to track average speeds and look at the speeds that are being picked up. So now we are taking these speed signs from just an alternative to enforcement, something to supplement the police in our neighborhoods, to now this is going to get them live information and real-time data that they can use to help with enforcing our speed areas and to make our neighborhood safer. So I just wanted to note that we're embracing technology where we can, as we currently do in these meetings, and I look forward to taking advantage of more opportunities like this in the future. So with that, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you everyone. We have no old unfinished business to discuss. We'll move to new business, item A, approval of the 2021 board and commission meeting dates. That exhibit was attached, setting out the calendar events for all of our boards and commissions and as we talked about, you know, as the year progresses and different things happen, we'll make adjustments to that schedule as necessary, but this is our, setting up our standard schedule that could be adjusted depending on what happens. Any, any discussion on those?
Mr. President, I make a motion, we approve the 2021 boards and commissions meeting dates as presented.
Alright, I've got motions. There are second?
Second.
I've got a motion, a second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you everyone. We will make sure to get that posted so people can see where we'll be meeting over the next year. Alright, next we're going to move to item B, which is the first read of the 2021 salary ordinance, ordinance 2020-30, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, establishing wages and salaries for 2021. Nathan, do we have folks signed up to speak on this particular item?
Yes, Cheryl Hancock is asked to speak and is being unmuted now.
Alright, thank you.
Hello, Council. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. I'm, just wanted to make sure, I have some questions on the ordinance. I'll kind of go, kind of a couple of questions through each page. On the first page, under number two, you guys have listed the council, judge, and safety board pay schedule. In my opinion, the judge should be taken off of this. Seems how this is for next year and we do not have a judge, so I don't know if that was just an oversight on that. Under number seven, the emergency differential pay, so with this pandemic that we have for the employees that are working in the office or from home, does this go for, just for the, those employees that are working over the 40 hours of their normal work week? Or is it just for like the fire department guys who are going with Indiana Task Force One? If you can just kind of clarify that and clarify how you came up with the 2080 number? Number eight, the stay-home pay, how are you guys checking and making sure that your employees are actually working those full eight hours each day while they're at home? I know some employers have it done by keystrokes. You know, when they're in the office, they're, you're able to watch them and see them actually working. Just trying to figure out how you guys are keeping track of that. The next one is number 12, which is the added duty bonuses. I know this has been talked about for several years now, how you guys are figuring those out. How are you guys determining which employees get them, which employees don't? In the past, it has just been a straight across the board, every employee gets one. If one person gets one, everybody gets one regardless if one person does more work than anybody else. I know that Ms. Austin and some of the other members that was going to form a committee to start trying to figure out how to do performance reviews. I'm just curious to see if you guys have started doing those? And if not, why not? Because this has been talked about for over two years. And I do have some questions on the salary 2020 matrix. Do you want me to ask those now or are you guys going to be discussing that later? Because it wasn't listed as an exhibit under this, but it was listed as your guys' meeting documents.
If you could, please ask all questions that you have so we can get everything on the record.
Okay, wonderful. For the 2021 salary matrix, it does list for an HR director. I know that we have put that on the salary matrix for the last, I think, two or three years. Are we actually going to hire one of those? The next one is under the planning department. You guys have for a new position of a Director of Developmental Services. What will this person actually do? And like a short couple of sentences, I know not everything will be able to be told. Will this person have to have a degree in that field and why is it not listed like under the town administration, which is like where Nathan's position is listed? Under the PR department, you guys now have listed as a communications manager. What will this person do? We haven't really seen a whole lot with PR this past year. There's no newsletters that we used to have the last couple of years. You know, the few things on Facebook, you know, pushing out the meeting agendas, pushing out grand openings and some Twitter things, but there's been really nothing other than that. So I don't understand why we need a third person in that department currently. The next one is under Public Works and the MBH. I see we're adding a Public Works Project Manager and it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, the red is to get rid of a Street Department Administrative Assistant. Do we not already have someone in that role? And if so, what will be happening to that person? I'm assuming they may get moved to another area. And then the last one I have is on the, under the police budget. Mainly considering the special pays portion of it, like the bicycle officer, the reconstructress, and then the PSO firefighters. Are we not having those anymore? I know that was a big push for the PSO program to have those firefighters as part of our group, so I don't know if you guys have just included that in their regular pay or if you're not making them complete those requirements anymore. I think that's all I have for this op, for this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so as far as most of your questions concerning, when we look at differential pay for employees, stay-at-home during an emergency, and we look at the added duty bonuses, those are all going to be a case-by-case depending on the situation, the manager, how they're working through things. Additionally, when we're talking about monitoring what people are doing, like that's going to be very much dependent on the job and what that job requires, what they need to produce, what their work product is and how they're going to need to go about those things. And that's something where, you know, as every employer is going to do, they're going to work with their employees to see what that work product is and then to make sure that's getting taken care of and monitoring that. So that's going to be a major-specific item that's going forward. You asked about differential pay. Again, that's a case-by-case depending on who's taking on what job responsibilities and how that's going to work. And then you also asked about performance evaluations. That's something where Jason and Susan and Jeff Wishick all were working on that, putting together some things that started with a long process in which it led to the changing of our insurance, looking at our, our benefits, and then has transitioned into performance. I know Jason and his team has had performance management items in the past and has been working through, how do we implement a performance management system in the middle of a pandemic when we're trying to make sure we can continue our operations while not being able to be at the building in full or have to deal with a closed building or having to deal with mask mandates? All these other things have popped up. So that's something that's going on there and that should get us through most of your questions there on the ordinance piece. And then when we get to some of your other questions, as far as the planning part, as you know, Whitestown is a very busy community. It is fast-growing community for the Athenon Road, probably going to be for another year after this. There's a lot that is flowing through the planning department and the building department with permits, inspections, re-inspections, all of the different conversations that are going on for the developments that don't happen, let alone the developments that do happen and go through. So there is a lot of workload that's being handled by both Brittany and by Dave. So what we've been talking about is looking at these pieces and knowing that to make sure that we are maximizing our efficiency as a town unit, that we would create a Director of Developmental Services that would coordinate these two departments. And they would be the person that is the lead in making sure that there is synergy between the planning department and between the building department, bringing those on the same page while also having the directors of those do the day-to-day work and the long-term planning for each of their individual departments with another person that will be working on the long-term vision of the town and coordinating those visions. So that's what that position is all about. It's a high-low position. Plus, since planning is going to be the driving force, it's going to be in there. Alright, next you mentioned the communications piece. That actually was a position that was put in last year, so that's been in the salary ordinance this entire year. That's why you don't see any color coding on it. That position was here. That was to help enhance that department and then once the pandemic hit, we had to retool what we were doing and get through that piece of it. And now that we're starting to get used to where we are, we see that there is a vaccine and there are therapies and treatments in sight. As we look towards 2021, we're going to be looking to fill that position so they can do and engage more with the community, get more information out there. And I would encourage you, since you're talking about not getting the quarterly anymore, that paper publication that we had to do all that fundraising for to make sure we paid for it, we've come up with a more efficient means of keeping people informed. And that is the email newsletter that's coming out on a weekly basis. So if you're not a part of that, I do encourage you to go to the website and sign up for that. And then when you're talking about the different pays for the different departments, I'm, well, actually before I get to the public safeties, you had one on Public Works. And so looking at Public Works, the individual that is currently in the Street Department Administrative Assistant position has indicated to us that they're going to retire in the very near future. So they are going to be rolling off and then we're going to have an individual already on staff will then have the Public Works Project Manager position. And that will then take the place of, that is an enhancement to an administrative assistant position. And we will then go to the fire department and the police department questions you had about those different stack pays. Those came from conversations between Chief Ralston and Chief Westrich and town administration. And this is what they set forward as being the pay structure and scales. They wanted to keep us up to date with the market and with the operations of the units. For your particular questions about the PSO program, I will have Chief Ralston put together some information for you on what the future of that program is to share with you in the future. Alright. Nathan, was anyone else signed up to speak on the salary ordinance?
No, there was not.
Council, any discussion on the salary ordinance first read tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to item C, the public hearing on the Coke GDI abatement. So I will call the public hearing to order at 7:20 PM. Alright, Nathan, do we have anyone from the public that is signed to speak on this particular item?
We have a request for item D, which is pretty much similar. Is this now when you'd like them to speak during the public hearing?
This is the public hearing on that particular item. This would be the appropriate time for them to, to speak on it.
Cheryl Hancock has been unmuted again.
Alright.
Okay, Council, um, question, I guess I don't really kind of know where to start. I guess if you could, for, for some of us, some of us know the difference between real and personal property taxes, but others may not, so if you could go over those. But I guess I'm trying to figure out, seeing how this abatement covers the land that was also the Peabody Farm, that GDI just tried getting to be changed over to, from ag to the warehouses. Seems how that was pulled and did not go through. My question is, if homes get put in to this area, which is what is required by the comp plan, what kind of effect will this have for, as far as the TIF goes and what kind of taxes will be collected in that area that is highlighted in yellow in the map that is included in this? If you could verify that along with the, go over the real and personal property taxes, because it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot for, you know, we just spent $10 million on two buildings this past year for bonds, you know, that we're going to be paying for. And here are some of these big warehouses that are getting seven, 10-year abatements. So it seems like us residents are getting the brunt of increased taxes to help cover these bonds and debt that the town has inquired. Thank you.
Quick clarification, when bonds in a TIF area are taken out, those bonds are paid for by the taxes collected within that TIF area and not by the residents, just so that we're all on the same page. As far as the difference between real, personal, and then also if residential is inside a TIF area and how it's taxed, I'm going to defer to Council on that one to make sure that we get the appropriate legal definitions put in there. Steve, would you like to?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to clarify, this is, the, the public hearing that we're on is not on a, on a TIF project. It is on a tax abatement proposal. It's on, related to the Coca-Cola bottling company site. You have already, had already approved real property abatement for the vast majority of the site. You'll recall there was a small sliver of parcel that was a part of that project that was going to include their fleet maintenance facility. That had not, had not been annexed yet by the town. We just completed that annexation here within the last 30 or 60 days. And so this expands the real property abatement that you had already given to the rest of the, of the project. And by real property, we're talking about the physical building structure on the property is assessed as real property assessment. That's, that's what is abated here. So you've already approved it for the vast majority of this project. There was just these parcels that were added in. So we're really talking about adding it into an existing area that was already created for tax abatement. And then there is a tax abatement in there for the personal, for personal property, for the Coke project. And that's really on the manufacturing equipment that gets put into the facility that is taxed and assessed as personal property. And that came on the, from the recommendation from the, I knew the Booney DC, I think the Indiana Economic Development Corporation has recommended that for this project as well. And of course, the, our own redevelopment commission has recommended, recommended that, so.
Alright, thank you Steve. So, quick summary, this is a small portion that was annexed into the town. Real is building, personal is equipment inside, and this is only extending those items to those parts that brought in, not to this. So, alright, anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this particular resolution in this public hearing? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I've got motions. There are second? I'll second it. Motion a second, without further discussion, any, done? Alright, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, the public hearing is closed at 7:26 PM. Alright, next we have item D, to consider a confirmatory resolution for Coke/GDI abatement, resolution number 2020-21. Resolution number 2020-21, a confirmatory resolution of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, for the second enlargement of the Whitestown Fishback Creek ERA number one and approval of real and personal property tax abatement applications. GDI Holdings LLC real, CC-BCC Operations LLC personal. Alright, I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution number 2020-21.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you everyone. We're going to move on to item E now. This is consider ordinance approving closure of court bank account and transferring remaining funds to rainy day fund, ordinance 2020-31.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion, we suspend the rules and have second reading of ordinance number 2020-11. 31, sorry, can't see.
Alright, I will second the motion to suspend the rules. Is there further discussion? Alright, seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, 5 to 0, rules are suspended. Ordinance 2020-31, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, closing town court bank account and transferring funds to the rainy day fund. I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2020-31.
Second.
Ooh, dueling seconds. Alright, I've got a motion, a second, is there further discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, motion's adopted, 5 to 0. Next we'll move on to item F, consider legacy core allocation area amendment resolution, resolution 2020-23. Resolution 2020-23, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving, one, a declaratory resolution of the Town of Whitestown Redevelopment Commission amending the allocation area for the Town of Whitestown Legacy Core Redevelopment Area, number one, to establish a new allocation area, and two, the order of the Whitestown Plan Commission related thereto. Mr. Master, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item?
Do not.
Alright, I make a motion, we adopt resolution 2020-23.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you everyone, 5 to 0. Next let's move on to item G, consider resolution approving new Fishback Creek TIF area, resolution 2020-25. Here we go, resolution number 2020-25, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving, one, a declaratory resolution of the Economic Development Plan of the Town of Whitestown Redevelopment Commission and establishing the Whitestown Fishback Creek Anger Development Area, number one, and two, the order of the Whitestown Plan Commission related thereto. Alright, Nathan, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this one?
Yes, Cheryl Hancock has asked to speak.
Go ahead.
Hello, Council. This one will be brief. I do have a thing though, on the GDI in the 2021, where you guys said that the TIF was not affected. Exhibit C under that ordinance does show the Peabody Farm in that resolution. So just wanted to clarify that. For item G, since the petitioner has withdrew their request for this area to be warehouses, is there still a reason to clarify it to be a TIF area? Especially if per the comp plan, it shows homes are to be in there. What can homes pay for or put taxes into a TIF area like a warehouse can? Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, as everyone knows, when we are doing these things, we are setting ourselves up so that should development come through, we are prepared for this type of and I think this is going to be appropriate for us to establish this as part of the area so that depending on what happens and how the market trends and what projects may come up in the future, we are prepared so that we can have us ready to go when different things come through. So that would be my answer to the question. So thank you very much for asking. Next we're going, so resolution 2020-25, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-25.
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Is there further discussion on the resolution? Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, 5 to 0, thank you everyone. Next we're going to move on to consider ordinance approving the UDO text amendments, ordinance 2020-32. You give me a second to go through my papers, I can get that one together. There we go. Ordinance number 2020-31. Ordinance number 2020-32, an ordinance amending text within the Unified Development Ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana. Steve, quick clarification from legal, please. This is an amendment to the UDO, so this needs to have two readings, whereas a rezone?
One reading, one reading. We can do one reading on this one.
Okay, great, that is good to know, UDO one reading, thank you. So, Nathan, do we have anyone that has requested to speak on the UDO amendment?
No, we do not.
Alright, I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2020-32.
Second.
I've got a motion is second, is there further discussion on the ordinance?
Just one quick question, what was, what was the vote of the Whitestown Plan Commission on this?
I have that here, let me grab that. Pretty sure it's unanimous, but I don't want to speak out of turn. Brittany, if you're on, please feel free to chime in while I'm shuffling papers.
I think it was seven to zero.
Alright.
Yeah, it says it was favorable, but I didn't see it on the certification.
It was unanimous vote at Plan Commission, all seven members were present and voted for it.
Now, there it is, yeah, thanks Brittany.
Thank you Brittany.
Thanks Brittany.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments, discussion? Alright, I've got a motion is second. Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you everyone. Next, we'll go on to item I, consider a resolution amending comprehensive plan to adopt the updated thoroughfare plan, resolution 2020-22. Resolution amending the comprehensive plan for the town of Whitestown, Indiana to update the thoroughfare plan.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution number 2020-22, and I thank the group for very hard work on this.
You have a request to speak on this item?
So, I'm gonna second the motion, so that we have that motion is seconded, and we have someone set up to speak, so Nathan? Alright.
Hello, council, once again, I don't know if my points will really be worth anything, since our motion and a second has already been done. But our biggest issues with this thoroughfare plan regard Perry Worth Road, 575 and 300. You have Perry Worth Road and 300 South as major collectors, and 575 as a major artery, which would put it at four lanes, all the way up to 200 South, which is not even in the town's jurisdiction. There is no way you're gonna get four lanes from Albert S. White up to 200 South unless you either tear down houses and a fire station, or tear down more houses. There is houses within those hundred and twenty feet of right away that you would need in order to make this a major artery. You know, and expanded two lanes, maybe with a third lane in certain areas, possibly, but there's no way you're gonna get four lanes unless you're gonna start paying people to tear down their houses and tear down a fire station, just not possible. 575 does not get anywhere near the traffic that 300 South and Perry Worth Road gets, yet they're only considered major collectors, which is kind of very odd, because they get tons more than 575 will ever get. And then there is also four intersections that is listed in this thoroughfare plan that is not even in your jurisdiction, the states that are, you guys are proposing for intersection improvements. As far as I know, you cannot propose intersection improvements that are not in your jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we've got a motion is second, is there further discussion on the thoroughfare plan?
No, there's not.
Nathan? Thank you. Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you everyone. Next, we have brought ourselves to letter J, consider a resolution approving police equipment/lease, fleet lease, resolution 2020-24. Resolution of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving execution of equipment, lease documents, police vehicles, and equipment. So I would make a motion to approve resolution number 2020-24.
I'll second.
Alright. Further discussion, Susan, do you want to talk a little bit about this, coming from the police commission?
This was in our, we did not have a meeting this month, but it, this is part of our usual annual fleet rotation, and we reviewed, the police commission reviewed this, and fully recommended that it come on to the council agenda for approval. This is to make sure that we continue to be able to operate and put safe vehicles on the road for our officers, so that we can respond as is needed to anything that occurs.
Okay, that is great. Thank you very much for that, and thank you to the police department for keeping on top of their leased vehicles and making sure that we are taking full advantage of our great credit rating that we have earned through the work that we've done in our fiscal planning, and being able to keep our officers safe, which also then keeps our residents safe. So thank you very much for your work that you've done on that. So I've got a motion is second, is there any other further discussion? Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much everyone, adopted five to zero. Next, let's move on to item K, the Braun Property Development Mixed Use Zoning Amendment, ordinance 2020-34. So, let me first read, and then we will get to those who've signed up to speak. Ordinance 2020-34, an ordinance concerning zoning maps within the zoning ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, zoning map amendments, PC 20-044-ZA. Now Nathan, we have several people, or three people, three different groups, signed up to talk, is that correct? Or is it four?
No, I've only received three requests to speak.
Alright, then, oh, let's go through, having, so what we're gonna do, is we're gonna start off by, the petitioner is going to talk about their petition, and then we will go through those that want to speak on the petition, and then the petitioner will be allowed rebuttal as per normal. So, Nathan, if you would please allow the petitioner their time.
Sorry, I'm having trouble finding the petition in the list.
I believe it's Brian Scheward is the name.
Just looking for the attorney, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. President, we have a PowerPoint that we presented to the Plan Commission. With your permission, I would ask Nathan to display that, and I would walk through the presentation using that PowerPoint, displaying it to the town council with your consent.
I would just ask that you be mindful of everyone's time, but please feel free to go ahead.
I will abbreviate my presentation per your suggestion.
Thank you, sir.
Nathan, could I ask you to put that up?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to get it up without losing the Zoom, I have a hard time sharing, because I lose control of the Zoom meeting when I do.
Thank you.
And actually, trying to find that right document. Do you have that on you, Brittany? I can't, with, I lose control of the, Brittany says she can share, I'll give Brittany control of that one.
Alright.
Yep, give me one second, let me pull it up in my email.
I just want to thank everyone for working through us as we get through these technical difficulties, I do appreciate everyone's time this evening, and we want to make sure that we are cognizant of that, but we also do appreciate you taking your time on your evenings to join us from wherever you are. As I've said to many people before, you know, allowing us the flexibility to Zoom, these meetings allows us to meet people where they are, instead of having to require everyone to come to one central location where you can only see us in person, so I do enjoy the flexibility of these, and being able to have everyone here and even see some of the different backgrounds where people are taking in these meetings. So, thank you again for your patience and for joining us this evening. Good to go, Brittany?
I am still trying to pull it up, I apologize, I'm trying to pull up the link that they sent me.
Brittany, if it would help, this is Brian, you can't see me on the screen, but we could share it from our side, but we can also wait, it's not a big deal.
I would ask Nathan, if you guys want to, if you guys, if you guys are allowed to share your screen, that way you can also push through it?
Yeah, you're set to, to share.
There we go, we're all sharing tonight.
Okay, alright, I will do this.
There we go.
And before we get going, I will ask if you can see, did you see my screen?
I can. Jeff, wish I can.
Good. Well, members of the council, thank you for hearing our case in these extraordinary times. Here with me is Brian Scheward and Steve Braun and Adam Braun, who represents petitioner, Braun Property Development LLC. This is a, it's a very interesting case, and a sizable rezoning, and the first rezoning under your new MU core zoning ordinance, so thanks for your time this evening. This is a request, to the next slide please, Brian, to rezone about 440 acres, it's owned by Mr. Braun's company, Braun Property Development, from R3 and AG to MU core. And this exhibit shows that there's what we'll call the sites on the west, there's two sites on the west, and then there's one sizable site on the east. And in sum, it's 440 acres made up of the sites that are shown along 575 east on the west, north of 300 south, on both sides of the Big Four Trail, and then on both sides of 700 east, over on the east side, again, north of 300 south. Next slide, please. The site is undeveloped now, that is looking south along 575 towards the town, next slide, please. This is the Big Four Trail that divides those two western sites that we talked about a minute ago. Next slide, please. This is a photograph showing 700 and to the east of 700, that's the site looking south. Next slide, please. And that's looking straight from 200 south down to south, that shows you the whole site on the east side. So, the next slide shows members of the council what the zoning is around this site, and you can see the sites outlined in green, both on the left and right side of that exhibit, and you can see that it's owned to R2, R3, and PUD around this site. And so, what has happened in this area north of the Big Four Trail is, there's been Trailside that's been approved, that's at PUD, the western part of the site borders that, and there's been Prairie Chase along Main Street that's been approved, and then there's been Jackson Run, that's the R3 in the orange, yellowish colored area of this map, and this site is over to the east of that. So again, 440 acres, the request is to rezone that from R3 and AG to MU core. Next slide, please, Brian. So what is the MU core zoning? It's a new classification, and it's to establish, it was established to accommodate developments that have a variety of commercial, office, and residential uses. And a key facet to this new zoning classifications, member of the council, is it requires connection to public water and sewer, and most importantly, it requires development plan approval. So each time a parcel in this 440 acres comes in as a proposed to be development, whether it's for neighborhood commercial, or whether it's for townhomes, or whether it's for single family homes, each time, Mr. Braun's gonna have to bring in a development plan for the Plan Commission's approval. So there's gonna be a review process each time any part of this 440 acres is developed. Next slide, please. So you can see that members of the council, from County Road 300 south on the south, to County Road 200 south on the north, where that heavy black line is, and from the western borders of Whitestown, to the eastern borders of Whitestown where border Zinesville, that area is gonna undergo a transformation. Trailside has been approved, Prairie Chase has been approved, now MU core has been recommended unanimously for approval by the Plan Commission. That area is going to be a terrific feeder, a complement to the legacy core area, which is within walking distance of all this proposed developed area. And so, that, over the next ten to fifteen years, that area is gonna transform itself. Mr. Braun has committed to develop this in a cohesive, cohesive complementary way that will be subject to the Plan Commission's approval as he brings each parcel through. Next slide, please. The western property, the Plan Commission asked Mr. Braun to agree that there would be no commercial development over in that area, Mr. Braun made that commitment, and their recommendation for approval was subject to that. Next slide, please. Over in the eastern area, there is a significant amount of green space, as you can see, and the Plan Commission asked Mr. Braun to agree that the green space shown on the left side of that exhibit, both in the center and up at the top, would be preserved for open or park spaces, Brian is showing you on that cursor, and Mr. Braun agreed to that commitment, and so the Plan Commission recommended approval unanimously, subject to that commitment. Next slide, please. What Mr. Braun has done, and worked closely with the folks in the Whitestown administration, is create a conceptual plan for a park area and open area that will run from just north of Pier Street, almost all the way to 200 South, and that's depicted in this illustrative master plan. Next slide, please. So this identifies the surrounding areas, you can see where the Lions Park is, you can see where the Jackson Run subdivision that is being developed right now is, you can see where the Jackson Run subdivision to the north, it's coming, and you can see what the proposed amenities are in this, in this proposed green space, open space area. Next slide, please. That open area represents somewhere between 54 acres and almost 60 acres of open space and park area that was made as part of a commitment by Mr. Braun to remain in that condition as part of the development of this eastern part of the MU core rezoning. Next slide, please. How does this link up with your comprehensive plan, members of the council? This area, the eastern side, is within the Eastern Gateway Mixed Use area, and your comprehensive plan said that it was anticipated this would include a collection of office, service retail, commercial retail, industrial businesses, and mixed density residential uses. That's exactly what the MU core zoning allows for under your new UDO. It goes on to say that in this area, there would be a mix of residential use, that's what we're providing and proposing, and it means it will need to accommodate a mix of densities in this area. We, the MU core allows for that, and as each section parcel would be proposed for development, it will come before the Plan Commission for development plan approval. Next slide, please. The staff reviewed this carefully, Mr. Braun has been working with them for several months. The staff concluded that the rezon meant the goals of the Whitestown Comprehensive Plan, as well as aligning with the future land use map, and the staff noted this will be a gateway into the town's legacy core and northern district of Whitestown from the east and the west, and should help improve the local infrastructure of that area. Next slide, please. I mentioned that Mr. Braun agreed to the two commitments requested by the Plan Commission in their meeting last week, and those commitments have been filed with the town. Next slide, please. This just shows the outline of the areas, the rezoning of the western portion of the MU core request would be subject to annexation by the town, and we have requested that annexation, and the Plan Commission's approval was subject to that annexation. Next slide, please. That shows the outline of the eastern area of the MU core area. Next slide, please. That's showing the north to south, the proposed area along the east or western side of 700 east, and the open and park area that I mentioned a minute ago. a minute ago. In summary, uh, next slide, Brian, thank you. So the staff concludes that this rezonement meets the goals of the comprehensive plan. The staff concluded that this would be a gateway into the legacy core and that the MU core was established to accommodate developments containing a variety of commercial, office, and residential uses. That's exactly what Mr. Braun proposes on this acreage. It matches these goals of special development area six, and it will result in responsible growth and development in that area. And critically, it provides for continued development plan review by the plan commission for all future development in this MU core area. Lastly, members of the council, the Whitestown Plan Commission unanimously recommended this for approval, uh, and voted 7-0 to, uh, send this recommendation on to you. Thank you for your time this evening. We'll certainly try to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Uh, any initial, actually, you know what? Let's just go to, um, the other members that have signed up to speak to make sure they get an opportunity to speak. Um, so Nathan, when you have reclaimed, uh, control of the meeting, please let me know so that we can then, um, allow others to speak.
And I'd like to clarify, I have a question too, Clinton, if I could.
Uh, I was gonna, uh, let everyone speak and then follow up. But if you want to ask a question now, Jeff, please feel free to go ahead.
If you don't mind, just one of the slides, I thought it showed commercial going all the way down to Pierce. But then in the, when it shows the residential, it doesn't look like that. Is the commercial going all the way to Pierce?
Perhaps go back to, right, uh, right there. That one.
That one, yeah.
Uh, yes, on the east side of 700, it shows commercial going to Pierce.
Right, because in the drawings below that one, I don't think it shows it going to Pierce, but maybe I'm missing something.
Uh, those drawings probably just show the west side of 700.
Yeah, yeah, Jeff, that one, the west side of 700, not, they haven't shown anything to the east side of 700 yet.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, so Nathan, if good.
Yeah, the first request to speak was Eric in Nicole. Let me see if I can find unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Nicole Ladiga Lothian, and I'm here with my husband, Eric Lothian. We live at 7367 East 300 South. We would like to comment specifically on the 265 acres east of 700. While not fully opposed to the redevelopment of this property, we are against the proposed zoning at this time. As the application lacks significant development details, plans, and timelines, this feels rushed and opportunistic. Mr. Braun has not committed to size and density of the proposed land uses nor types of developments. Without these commitments, Mr. Braun is within his right to build a gas station, box stores, or 265 acres of apartments, depending on market demands at the time. Mr. Braun has stated he's not, he does not intend to build a gas station. However, we have not seen this documented or submitted to any plan certifications or commitments. At this time, the developer has indicated open dialogue will occur as opportunities arise, and we welcome this. However, once the zoning is in place, the developer has no incentive to team with his neighbors, and we lose the opportunity to ensure suitable compromises are documented or observed. Our concerns, along with many others, were presented at the plan commission meeting on November 9. Neither the commission nor Braun acknowledged or addressed any comments regarding this particular parcel. Mr. Braun and his attorney had ample time to speak while community members were muted in the virtual environment. The town of Whitestown has limited opportunity to ensure this rezonement is duly inspected and executed to wholly represent the soul of our town in a key corridor entrance coming from Zionsville and Carmel. Given the lack of plans for this development, a zoning postponement would not be developmental, uh, sorry, detrimental to the developer nor the comprehensive plan. It would allow the town, citizens, and Braun Property Development to have a meaningful conversation in which both parties may benefit. If approval is imminent, we respectfully request additional commitments are made concerning the 265 acres east of 700 to control the scope of this development in favor of the residents in town. This open-ended zoning has an immediate negative impact to our property values, and we are essentially signing a blank check to Mr. Braun and hoping he'll respect our community and his neighbors, but he will not have incentive to do so. We duly support Whitestown becoming a world-class community. We should be holding our town and developers to a higher standard. At this time, thank you for your consideration and time.
All right, thank you, Nicole and Eric. Nathan?
The next to speak would be Cheryl. Give me one second, I'll unmute.
Hello, council. Um, as Nicole spoke on the east, um, portion of this project, I'm speaking on the west portion of this project. Um, these, both of these properties still have not been annexed. If Mr. Braun truly wanted these parcels annexed into town, it would have been long on to your agenda way before now. These parcels are still not on your agenda to be annexed into the town. Mr. Braun has been talking about this for over a year about wanting to develop this area. Why, why are we rushing it? Um, we were told by Ms. Austin that in order for homes to be put along 575, that there would have to be a new lift station put in, in this area, preferably behind the fire station. There is also no public water or sewer that runs along north of 300 south. Who is going to pay for these things? Mr. Braun's not going to pay for those things. Um, I spoke with Rachel at the Boone County Area Planning Office. She states you have no legal jurisdiction to rezon those two parcels. She said there is no memorandum of understanding with the commissioners that gives you the right to rezon those properties, especially because they are not annexed. They've not been on a council agenda to be annexed. Um, Mr. Braun had stated that he is pushing forward because this town council is letting him push forward. It seems this developer is running all over this town and letting him do whatever he wants. Granted, once and if these parcels are annexed into town, we are okay with the rural residential zoning, which is what the comp plan calls for. It calls for one to two homes per acre only. We are okay with that zoning. We are not okay with multiple homes, which we have no idea how many, and townhomes. That is not what the comp plan calls for. Um, it's time that Whitestown really starts to slow down, let some of these other projects get finished. And this is not responsible growth, like Mr. Tui stated. Mr. Braun has no idea what he's wanting to do in this area. He said it may be 10 years. Well, why not wait until he knows what he wants to do and then come back with a very detailed plan? Thank you.
Nathan, anyone else lined up to speak on this?
Yes, Marlowe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, good evening, council. My name is David Marlowe. I'm here with my wife, Lindsay Marlowe. We live, um, north of this project on 200, um, just east of 700. Um, I, so I, I guess I've got a few questions and, and, and I'll speak, this, this kind of relates to both, um, even though I'm directly affected by east side of Whitestown. What I'm trying to do is, is figure out how, and, and I'm a contractor, and we've done very limited work, um, in this town, uh, just because we should be much better outside of town. But the work we have done in this town, it seems that it takes me more, I gotta jump through more hoops and, and show, um, you know, be it the HOA or the town when I'm pulling permits, I have to show where on the property this particular project's going, be it a patio or deck. I have to show what material I'm going to be using. I have to show fairly good detailed plans before I can do anything at a eighth acre residential lot. So I find it hard to believe that under 400 and some odd acres can, without any detail or direction, or any kind of commitments, can be passed by a town that, uh, that, that, you know, like I said, that, that the additions that you are approving, I've got to go through hoops because they have HOAs to protect them. See, out here, we don't have HOAs. So we rely on you as the council to protect us, protect our property values, protect our best interest of life. So I, I'm really hoping that we can kind of pull the reins a little bit. You know, like I said before, I'm not opposed to, I, I know Whitestown's going to grow. I don't think Whitestown will be a, you know, whatever Braun wants to call it, or, or his, uh, his legal team, uh, world class. I think it already is a world-class, uh, community. I was born and raised in this community and had the chance to leave and decided not to. And now it's kind of embarrassing that every county road I turn down either has a warehouse or a cookie cutter housing addition. So, you know, as it stands right now, if you look at the plans that they are presenting, I'm the only house here on 200, but for whatever reason, there's a proposed, because we don't have any detailed plans. So it's all, you know, conceptual at this point in time. I have an entrance cat a corner from my house. Out of all the places on this road to put an entrance, why would you put a cat a corner in my house? Not that there's a better or or worse, but these are just some of the questions that I ask myself because I don't have any answers. We don't have detailed plans. We don't have any commitments, any hey, alls we have is, I, I don't know what I'm going to do with this property. Which, to get something passed on that, just, it, it, it seems, it, it doesn't seem legal, to be honest with you. But I guess, uh, you know, that, that's, that's where I stand. So I do appreciate your time. I hope every one of you on this council will, will kind of understand where I'm coming from. I mean, your home is your biggest asset. We love where we live. We, and I'm being carried out of here until there's houses put in front of us or an entrance cat a corner from us. And then, uh, my wife and I talked about selling. So just, you know, I, I hope you all can take this into consideration when you're, when, when, when you make this vote. Thank you for your time, each and every one of you.
All right, thanks, sir. Um, Nathan, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this?
No one else has notified me that wished to speak.
I will thank everyone that, that has spoken on this so far. Um, I will, uh, let the petitioner, um, provide a rebuttal, uh, to what has been said so far.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me? So, sir, with your permission, I'll, uh, respond in reverse order, first to Mr. Marlowe. I know the council knows this, but I think it bears repeating. Unlike what Mr. Marlowe described, uh, Mr. Braun could not build a garage, a shed, a road, a home, or any other structure in any of this property until he brings a very detailed set of plans in to the plan commission for development plan approval. And then he'll have to go through the normal process in the town of Whitestown to receive a building permit. So what we're doing tonight is not giving Mr. Braun the ability to start building homes or move any dirt or do anything on that land, other than set the template that it is an MU core zoned area. And there, he mentioned that he's governed by HOAs. There will be HOAs throughout this development. And each time he brings these parcels in, that will be part of the plans, the establishment of HOAs. Mr. Marlowe seems to think there's not details in this zoning. And what he's omitting or forgetting about is all that detail, all the development plans, the connections to the utilities, the establishment of the HOAs, the sidewalks, the streets, the type of development that is going to be on each parcel, that's all going to be placed before the plan commission for their review and approval. So I respectfully disagree with his characterization of what the council is considering tonight. Your, your ordinance provides that detailed development plan approval is required in the MU core district. So that will happen on any development within this, uh, area. As to Ms. Hancock's comments, first off, I assure you that Mr. Braun never said he was pushing this through. I, that is just not an accurate quote at all. In fact, Mr. Braun agreed to the first continuance that was asked for. And then to Mrs. Hancock's next assertion that he can't rezon this land because it's not annexed in, and that he would have asked for annexation some time ago. If, if you review the file, the request for annexation was done back in September. And I believe that the, it has been very clear to the plan commission, I hope we've made it clear to the town council, that the rezoning is subject to this annexation being approved by the town council. As the president and the council will, I'm certain, acknowledge, many rezonings are done subject to the condition that the area be annexed into the town. That's what this is. Ms. Hancock raised the fact that there's not public water or sewer there. She's, I'm sure she's exactly right. But under the MU core zoning classification that we are seeking the council's approval for, you have to have connection to public sewer and water. Again, there will be no construction, no development, no improvements of any kind in that area until there's adequate service by public water and sewer and the town has signed off on that. To the Lothians, uh, that the, this is, uh, there are no commitments. Actually, there are commitments, and they were approved by the plan commission. There is, there has been another commitment, and I would respectfully ask the council if they see fit to approve this, make it subject to the commitment from Mr. Braun, that there will be no gas stations in this MU core zoned area. He's made that commitment to, um, members of the, of the administration, and he's made that commitment publicly to the people that we have met with, uh, and will make it again tonight. That commitment should be part of this zoning, that there's not going to be a gas station in this MU core zoning. Lastly, members of the council, we sent out almost 60 notifications to surrounding property owners. We had a Microsoft Teams meeting where we invited neighbors who were concerned to, uh, voice their concerns. We scheduled that. We held it. Five neighbors, uh, participated in that. This notice was sent out, uh, now 45, 50 days ago. We had a hearing scheduled before the plan commission. The neighbors asked us to continue it. The plan commission asked us to consider it continuing. We did so we could meet with our neighbors and, and discuss their concerns. This case was very carefully considered by the plan commission. It was a long hearing. The neighbors got their chance to weigh in, the five that, uh, attended the meeting, and the plan commission voted unanimously to approve for this. So the plan commission voted unanimously to approve it. The planning staff supports it. With that, we would respectfully request your favorable consideration of this rezoning petition. Thank you for your time.
All right, and, um, I do see here, uh, that Mike Andreoli has his hand up to, um, participate. So Nathan, could you please allow Mr. Andreoli, uh, some time?
Yes, he should be unmuted.
All right. Yeah, it looks like he's still muted. Can you hear him? Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, President, uh, Vaughn. Uh, I do appreciate the opportunity to address you. Uh, I, I either didn't raise my hand quick enough, any initial, uh, comments that, that you had prior to the, uh, the rebuttal by the petitioner. Uh, and, uh, I'm going to be very brief. I sent the council, uh, two written undertakings, one that also went to the plan commission that we had, hope you had an opportunity to review. Uh, the next, uh, one that we sent was on November 11th. Uh, and my only comments, uh, and, and as brief as they may be, only relate to the, to the property that's on the, uh, east side of, uh, Whitestown, not the property seeking the MU core, uh, zoning development on the west side. And I've been retained by those east side residents to make comments and help vet this. Uh, our concern, as we've enunciated, is once this property is rezoned without any commitments whatsoever, regardless of whether the developer has an obligation to do development plan approval. whatsoever, regardless of whether the developer has an obligation to do development plan approval and receive that approval from the Plan Commission, there are no limitations on what he can put on this property. For instance, you have a map that shows various categories, commercial, residential, multifamily. What you don't have, and what you don't have to date, is any detail connected with that map, nor do you have any limitations on the size of any particular proposed use. For instance, as I pointed out in my letter, if the developer seeks to develop 40 acres or 100 acres of multifamily, there is nothing that would prevent him from doing that, absent some type of limitation on how much percentage or how much acreage of each use. So, while we know you're not going to have all of the details, and the neighbors are not going to be provided all of the details that they want, I would, I would respectfully suggest that good planning and development would request and require the Town Council to at least establish a limitation on how much acreage will be included in each specific category shown on the drawing that Mr. Braun has submitted. That is not too much to ask for the residents. That gives them at least some protection that we're not going to have a sea of apartments or a sea of commercial use, and that you're really going to have a legitimate mix of those uses. While it falls short of what we would request, it would seem that, at the very least, that might be something that we would hope that the Town Council might consider. Thank you, Ms. President, for allowing me to, to address you even belatedly, and we do appreciate the opportunity to do so.
And then, Ms. Andreoli, did you want to state for the record who you're representing?
I'm representing a number of residents on the east side. I don't have the entire list with me tonight, but there's a number of residents that have retained me to do so. Nicole, who spoke earlier, was the principal one who organized that, and I'm representing her, and a number of residents along 700 and along Pier Street extended to 300.
Okay, so you don't have a list of the people you're representing. All right, thank you.
I'd be happy to provide.
Mr. Tui, would you like to have a rebuttal to Mr. Andreoli, since we kind of got out of, out of line there? I won't provide you the opportunity, as you had for the other individuals, since you are the petitioner?
Yes, just very brave, Mr. President, and thank you for that opportunity. So, Mr. President, this notion that this MU core rezoning classification doesn't give sufficient protection or control to the town of Whitestown, I, I think that's, that's sort of a false card. And here is an example, I would point to the council. As an example, when in the MU core zoning district, it lists several permitted uses, but when it gets to a use such as auto services, light service, it doesn't just make that a permitted use. It refers to that with the letter L, which stands for a limit, a use limitation. And so then you have to go back into the ordinance and look at what the use limitation is. And I'm just using this as an example, because we've eliminated gas stations. But, if there was a light automotive use, perhaps a, a oil change facility, or some facility like that, what the ordinance mandates is that adjoining residential districts must be protected from the external effects of the permitted use. That's right out of the MU core ordinance. It goes on to say that you have to screen that use by either a fence, or a wall, or a landscape buffer at least five feet tall. So, your ordinance was well crafted. It doesn't just allow a rezoning to MU core to allow any use with no collars or restraints around that. They are in your ordinance. And so, I respectfully disagree with the notion that this will create an ability to have X number of acres of some use. Each use has got to come back before this Plan Commission and have the Plan Commission approve the detailed development plans representing that use. I think the ordinance, the new UDO was carefully thought out to protect the town's development, and that this MU core was the type of zoning the town believed was appropriate in the area we've outlined on these diagrams.
Okay, all right, thank you. With that, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-34 with the additional commitment that was talked about here in not allowing the gas stations in this area. That would be my motion.
I'll second it.
I'd like to say something, if I may.
That's fine, I've got a motion, a second, and Jeff, you'll be the first to talk on further discussion.
All right, so, everybody, thanks for being here. I just wanted to share some of my thoughts on this. I received several emails from town residents, and I thank you all for reaching out as well for your comments today. Moving forward, I believe, I believe Whitestown should hold tax abatements and/or rezon requests only for developments that are above and beyond what we have been seeing in the past for the few years, right? I feel Whitestown has a fantastic future, and I'd like to see Whitestown hold all developers and businesses to a higher standard prior to approving any new requests. Now, having said that, from what I've reviewed, and what I see and what I've heard, I do believe this development does have an improved quality of life aspect for Whitestown, specifically with the parks part of the development. I appreciate the developers' willingness to continue working with the Planning Commission. I know it's part of it, but, and in an effort to be as transparent as possible during the process, I do think it's imperative to include the public as much as possible in those discussions while the final plan is created. So, I'd also like to make sure we try to include that if possible. And I, I agree, the no gas stations is also important. So, that's what I'd like to say about it.
All right, thank you very much. Is there further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for sending in the many emails that we've received and the many phone calls that I've, I've taken over the last few. I want you to know that you are not going unheard. We have read each and every one of them, and I will tell you that you prompted me to go back to the initial state statute that lists how you go about the entire planning process. And with that, I found and reviewed the Planning Commission meeting again, I found that they followed the state process as outlined by statute to a T, to the letter, all the way down to how we do it. I can reiterate that with a project like this, nothing gets built without it going in front of the Plan Commission again. And I'm, I'm going to make sure that I am, I'm going to just ask you, Mr. Braun, to please let me be a part of this, let me share with you what the residents are sharing, and share it again. I'd also like to, to request additional birmingham for those, for those residents who are already there. This is a shock, you know, anytime you've been someplace for 30 years and there's change, change is a shock, that there be additional birmingham so that as cars come through, your, your backyard is your privacy, and it has been your privacy. You kind of expect your front yard to, well, maybe you're going to see some lights, but your backyard, if somebody's driving up behind you, to, to make sure that there's screening or birmingham there so that lights are not going into the backyards of these people who've lived in this area for 30 years, so that there's, there's a, a good amount of screening there to protect from that happening. You know, I, I would love it if we could be one of those communities that in, and you guys are going to get mad at me, in 50 years, you can still see all the, the stars because lighting is, is so down-directed. I'm afraid we're losing that with the development, but I, I'm encouraged that we can continue to try to look for other ways. But I would ask, you know, to make sure that there's additional birmingham and screening so that the, the developments that go in behind additional, additional houses have some additional protection.
All right, thank you very much. Further discussion? All right, as we wrap up again, I want to thank everyone for their coming out and sharing your thoughts and concerns. Although we may disagree on these points, I do appreciate hearing from those that are impacted all across town with everything that goes on, so, so thank you for that, and I appreciate that. With that, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller? Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Miller? Did you?
So, I was going to say yes, but I, I would like to have something, I would like for us to make some sort of motion to add the additional birmingham that Susan was referring to.
Okay, um, so we are in the middle of a vote, so I would request consent of the council to go back to my motion, and I will amend it to include some additional birmingham in those particular areas, but leave it to Councilwoman Austin and the developer to put that together. Is that something that is acceptable to the council?
Yes, I second that.
Yep.
All right. So, that is my restated motion. Councilman Worrell, you had seconded the motion.
So, you're, you're keeping the contingency on the gas station?
Correct.
And adding the request on the birmingham?
A little of some additional birmingham, yes.
Right, okay. And I thought Councilwoman Austin had said birmingham and another term?
Birmingham and screening, it's, screening is a general term for what the berm is an impact of. Other than, can be fences, tree lines, things of that nature.
Okay, yep, just want to make sure that was included, and so with the revised motion, I will second that.
All right, so, Mr. Sumner, we have a motion, we have a second. Please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yep.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
All right, 5 to 0, thank you, everyone. That brings us to the last part of our new business agenda. Consider ordinance approving Jackson Run North zoning amendment 2020-33. Nathan, has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No, no one is speaking on this item.
All right, 2020-33 and ordinance amending zoning maps within the zoning ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana's zoning map amendments, PC 20-043-CA. Does the petitioner wish to speak on this particular item?
Mr. President, thank you. No, unless the council has questions, the Plan Commission unanimously recommended this for approval, and so we would respectfully request your favorable consideration of this ordinance.
All right. Then I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-33.
Second.
Motion, a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yep.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
All right, 5 to 0, the motion is adopted. That has brought us to the end of our new business agenda. Is there any other business to come before us?
None.
All right, I just want to again, thank everyone. Apologies if I was a little slow tonight. Sleep is few and far between, so hopefully, hopefully little Andrew will sleep a little bit more this next month, so by December, I'll be a little bit more bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. On that, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
All right, I've got a motion, and I'm going to say Eric seconded that. There we go. Further discussion on the motion to adjourn? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Worrell?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Yep.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wishick?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, we are adjourned, have a great evening.